And it looks like we've hit the top of the hour. Our first, before we formally open the meeting, first item of business, before we get to the formal agenda, we have a public hearing regarding a local law to restrict marking of curbs. This is a public hearing, I'll call the public hearing officially open. Now, the hearing has been opened, if there's anybody who would like to speak, please send me a message in the chat box. I will recognize speakers, we ask that comments are limited to three minutes in length and are directed to council with regard to potential marking of curbs. So the public hearing is officially open, anybody that is interested in speaking from the public, please put your name in the chat box. Reminder, we do ask that people, when they're given the opportunity to speak, that you turn your cameras on and make sure that you're able to unmute yourself. So second call, is there anybody present that would like to speak during the markings on curbs? Third and final call, is there anybody present that would like to speak on the marking of curbs, not talking about what is done officially by the city, but people decorating, painting their curbs? Let's see, Kevin McCarthy. Alright, it appears that we have no speakers regarding public hearing. So officially call the public hearing closed, and it is 7:03 PM. Ask all to rise who are able for the pledge of allegiance. I'll mute all so we're not confusing each other. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, we have the opportunity for public comments, if people would like to speak to council on any topics that are relevant to city governments, as the comments are limited to three minutes in length and are directed to council as a whole, please put your name in the chat box. I'm gonna give a minute and we have a couple of people coming in. So first, I'd like to give the opportunity, privilege of the floor. Steven Shoemaker, Steven, can you unmute yourself? Uh, I see you're, I cannot hear you. Is that me or is that you? You're currently muted, you look like you were...
Can you hear me now?
There you go.
Alright, I got it, sorry about that, thank you Mayor Tobin.
I bet it wasn't on my end.
Hello council, I'd like to take a moment tonight to speak about the mediation, responsibility, and challenge, and a challenge. As government officials, you all have a great responsibility to represent everybody in the city. From a young age, we're taught that we have a responsibility to treat others with love and kindness and to love our neighbor as ourself. It's a powerful lesson, you know, love your neighbor as yourself, because it doesn't include if you agree with people's opinions, or if you like the way they look, the job they have. It's simply to love other people like you love yourself. And something I've noticed recently in the country, and I'm sure you all have involving the city, would be the distrust of police and anti-police sentiment going through America and the results of it, because as we're getting torn apart, this weekend, two sheriff's deputies in LA were shot in their car. One of them had a six-year-old, and I know nobody supports that kind of behavior. But instead of coming together and supporting the wounded officers, a mob there blocked the entrance to the hospital and chatted they hoped they'd die. Cortland, the citizen of Cortland, I believe, would never do something like this and wouldn't want to do something like that. We appreciate our police officers and the job they do every day when they put on that uniform. They have our back, and we need to stand up and have theirs too. Mediation is going to happen, as you probably know, regarding our police departments, and suggestions for change will be brought before you. Cortland, to my knowledge, does not have police brutality, and I contest, we have good officers in Cortland. We don't have, you know, some of the problems maybe a bigger city might, I don't have the numbers myself. But I challenge you guys to consider making a promise to your constituents before that all happens, that you won't defund our police or place restrictions on them that would make it difficult to do their job safely and effectively, because we all support them, I'm sure you support them, and we wouldn't want Cortland to join other cities like down in Texas to fund the police departments, because it's a responsibility to stick together that we all have. Thank you very much for your time, and have a great night, and happy birthday.
Steven, thank you, our next speaker, Adam McGivern, Adam.
Alright, everybody hear me? Good evening, it's been a little while, hope you're all doing well, mayor, members of council. So I'm here tonight just to speak briefly on behalf of the residents of Hubbard Street regarding the ongoing issue of addressing our need for overnight parking. As you know, thirty-five people on Hubbard Street have all signed a petition asking for even alternating parking. This is not something that's just about renters, there's single-family homes that have a single space driveway or their driveway doesn't accommodate three or four cars for the family. So it's really not just about renters, it's single-family, it's owner-occupied, and it's everyone on the street. The good thing about this process, having gone to the Public Works Commission and being so public, there's been plenty of opportunity for anyone in opposition to speak out. To my knowledge, that has not happened. I just really hope that we're able to continue this dialogue and look at it as exactly we asked, a one-year pilot. I believe there's a lot of lessons that can be learned to make sure that if this is something that wanted to be added to other streets, other neighborhoods, and move on into the city, that it wouldn't be such a difficult task. You'd have the opportunity to learn from a year of experience as to what works, what doesn't work, and not shell out the front-end cost for something that may not be in the best interest of the city. So, I'm really interested to see how the discussion goes tonight, I know there've been a lot of things that have been brought up as far as concerns, snow removal, neighboring cities like Auburn, Ithaca, they've both been doing this, it does work. If there was a need for different equipments, this is something with a one-year pilot, it could be a long-term approach where you shift towards that different equipment rather than needing to buy it all upfront. It is something that's needed to be all season, not just excluding the winter. Between the technology that we have now, like the city text alerts, city emails, we certainly can let residents know if they need to get their cars off in the event of a major substantial snowfall. But realistically, I mean, we're in this area for the majority of our lives, most of us, we're aware of what snow does and when to move our cars out of the way. Being on a side street, we appreciate the work that's done in removing snow, but we also know we're not a top priority, and if we're missed for snow, we'd rather be able to park honestly than, you know, just have to remove a little bit of snow later with our, you know, on our own with our shovels. So, we're confident that this is something that can be accomplished. I know firsthand, having seen, you know, what the impact of allowing residential parking in the downtown did, I mean, in my lifetime, that's the most transformative thing that we have ever done as a city. I mean, that led to the upper floors being developed. Parking is an important thing in economic development, it's an incredible tool that should lead to increased home values, which then should lead to more property sales tax. I mean, the expansion of parking is something that could be a revenue generator for the city. When I look at other cities that are having to lay people off at substantial rates, I just really hope that this is a solution to a problem, but also an opportunity for you all to bring something that really improves the quality of the life for all city residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam, next up, William Eascher.
Hi, can you hear me?
Got you.
Got you?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Hi, good evening, excellent. I just wanted to bring up, I've been hearing a lot of talk and reading a lot of posts and chatter in regards to the Birch Building at Sycamore Park. A lot of people putting Bo Harp in the post said that there was a lot of vandalism, and there were broken into, broken doors, women were caught with spray cans, getting ready to pray. One of a female was chased. I was just curious if you could clear up what actually happened, my dad was actually one of the people that donated materials and helped build the Birch Building, and I would be highly disappointed if someone in the community didn't go down there and cause vandalism, and we haven't heard anything about it, is this anything that you could touch base on at some point? And clear if it actually happened?
That's all your questions. Request is about Birch Building, I do know that there is an investigation. There was some vandalism and somebody broke into the building. I would defer to the police chief to release more information or the police department in general to release more information when is appropriate. We're gonna move on, we have Brittany Van Loon.
Hi. I just quickly about my concerns about the book is being promoted currently, the hate you give to our community. My concerns are just that, I understand why the book is being suggested, but I'm concerned that as a community, we are promoting a book that could fuel the antitrust police rhetoric. I'm just, I'm nervous that it could cause further divide within our community, and I know that the Back to Blue mural was not allowed because of some reason. So I'm just, I guess I'm just concerned to see that, and I understand also that this is completely voluntary to read and participate in the discussion, and I believe a discussion does need to be made and had between people about the current tumultuous climate. But I'm not sure that promoting this book at this current time is going to provide healing and unity in our community. Thank you.
Brittany, and I'm asking Chad if she's able to, to talk about that further on the agenda during Cortland's poll. And you have one other, Scott Heath, Scott, did you want to speak now, or if this is regarding agenda item number three, then I would say that we wait, and you would be able to talk when we get to the agenda item, or is this something different?
No, it is an agenda item, thank you.
Okay, so if you're okay, we'll wait until we get to it.
Yes.
Very good. Looking through, that concludes what we have for public comments. Couple of things, but I think they'll fall well in line as we're going through the agenda on what I want to discuss. So I'll move on to minutes, we have Minutes from September 1st, our last meeting for the common council. We have a motion to consider filing Minutes as is by John Bennett, second by Troy. Council members for votes, as a reminder, please unmute yourself, and we'll do the verbal anyway when I ask for a vote. Are there any concerns regarding the Minutes, any potential modifications? Is that Tom Michaels? Hey, Tom, can you unmute yourself? There you are.
Yep. Item eight. Bill and myself were not even mentioned at all in that item.
Hey, Tom, where?
Item eight.
Item eight? What resolution number, oh wait, there we go. I'm looking at the resolution numbers. Alright. And, Tom, were you officially a no?
You're gonna have to go back over the tape, I guess. I can't recall.
Okay, we will review, and just to confirm, look at Mr. Parker, if we should hold off on voting on the Minutes, can we table or can we? Alright, can you hear me? Hear you, Red. Yeah, I think, I think we can vote on with just the note, the caveat to change eight when necessary, well, as necessary. Very good, thank you, thank you, Red. Are there any other concerns regarding Minutes? Tom, you got another one?
Yes, I do. Public comments, any individual speaking should address the council with their full name and not their first name, so we know exactly who's making the comment. Because sometimes you actually have a person with the same name as well.
Very good, and I'm looking through under public comments, I believe we can familiar with who it was and who spoke, and we can expand on the three that just have initials that we will update them. Thank you. Thank you, Tom. Last call, any other changes or modifications recommended for the Minutes? Alright, hearing none, all those in favor of filing Minutes as is, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carers? And if we'd like to ask, if we had for the end of the agenda, Prayer in the Park, we have an agenda item, resolution approved, Prayer in the Park, September 26th from 12 to 1 PM. So with council's permission, I'd like to have that discussion as an additional agenda item. Any objections? No. Alright. Agenda item number one, resolution approved, the subordination-
Mayor, do you have the mayor's report?
The items that I want to discuss, I think fit in well with regard to the agenda.
Okay.
Thank you.
My, my apologies.
Today, you get a little more leeway. And the item number one is a resolution to approve the subordination of the city mortgage on 22 Square Street to facilitate consolidation and refinancing two mortgages pursuant to the recommendation by the city's moneymode committee. Motion to consider, John Bennett, second, Jackie Chapman, discussion, and I believe that when Armstrong is here, we have questions as well. Any questions? Tom Michaels.
Well, we've actually done that in the past, and it actually makes sense, so I I see why that they brought that up to us.
Agreed, it's a good suggestion. There's no further questions, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries?
Thank you.
Thank you, Linda, it was a rough one tonight. Number two.
Mr. Mayor, can you just double-check with Jackie Chapman on when she raised her hand?
That was an aye.
Very good, so that was in favor. Thank you, Red. Agenda item number two, resolution approved, a special event application along with other required applications for voter case to be held 122nd, 2020, from 10 AM to 2 PM. So this is a request, the goal is to improve voter turnout. Speaking with the organizers recently, as, my gosh, it was either last night or this morning, but they may be opting out. My recommend, from what I understand, the request basically is vehicle storing just signs encouraging people to get out and vote. Not for an item, not for political party, just encouraging people, register and vote. And last discussion, it's conceptual, they may not be doing it, but I'll entertain a motion to consider. Katie Sullivan. Second, John Bennett, discussion.
Okay, for people to vote, that would be great, you need people voting.
Very good, there's no issues or concerns, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carers? Agenda item number three, resolution to approve sound device permit for a base S1 Pro PA speaker in various locations at various times throughout the city by Scott Heath Senior. Motion to consider. Troy Beckwith, second, Jackie Chapman, discussion. And Scott is presence. Scott, you could unmute, Tom, you raised your hands, so if you've got a question?
Normally, when we have something like this on the agenda, we have a councilman that'll, or woman that'll sponsor this particular individual. Do we have anyone tonight that would like to sponsor scan?
So, I can say that Scott and I met and we spoke for, oh gosh, half hour or so, a couple of weeks ago. If it pleases council, we can give them an opportunity to speak and take it from there. How's that sound time?
Yeah, sounds, sounds excellent.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
If you could share with council and the public what you are intending, what are your thoughts here?
Well, thank you council for the opportunity to speak with you. My name is Scott Heath, and I was born and raised in Homer, New York, I currently reside in Lafayette. I wear my heart on my sleeve for blue pride in Homer and also the street life of Cortland. Being a former drug addict myself and now a born-again Christian, I know that it is only the hope of the cross that has set me free, and through what I've been doing behind prison walls, also attaining a chaplaincy, I, I see a lot of fruit in the lives of those people that I've been able to reach, and my desire is to simply and lovingly do sorts of street preaching and also other types of outreach if necessary, using my Bose S1 Pro, which is a small, yet clear amplifier. I have done food box outreaches to different areas around the city, and I've been doing that now every month for the last twenty months. So it's mainly my, my desire to be able to utilize amplification, of course, within the guidelines that I have read through, they're online on the, on the city website, and, you know, abide by those types of laws. I do have one question though, because I'm coming under it as, I guess, a church, it says that no amplification is to be used on Sundays, and I was wondering if there is a difference in that if it was a church using amplification on a Sunday? Or that just means even churches cannot use amplification on Sunday, period, like, like no amplification as is stated?
Scott, I believe that would be a question for our legal advisor.
Okay. Honestly, I don't plan to do anything on a Sunday, and honestly, it's because of my work schedule, I am a tractor-trailer driver. I actually have to wake up in about four hours from now, and I work, you know, Monday, early Monday morning to Friday, sometimes even Saturday, so my, my time is limited, and that is why if Mayor Tobin was recognized on the permit, or, I'm sorry, the application that I submitted, that there is no precise date and time for this permit, I would just like the permit to go to the end of the year and then, you know, again, come back in January and, and do it again. Sort of a, an indefinite sort of thing, just because it may be sporadic. And if you could also explain to me what a sponsor does?
So, a sponsor would be somebody who has had the opportunity to speak with you and help place it on the agenda, basically supporting and saying that this is something that the community should entertain.
Okay.
So, and I believe that we talked about, Scott, I believe you and I spoke a little bit about this, that there has been times in the past where people have had the opportunity and have used the sound device permit, has not necessarily been well-received, in particular residential neighborhoods, and I'm sure you can understand the concerns that can come about.
Yeah, I get it.
Very good, so we do have noise ordinances, and in terms of lateness, ten o'clock PM during a weeknight, eleven PM on a weekend, and not before six AM, seven AM, depending on the day. But it is also that we'd like to make sure that people are comfortable with what's taking place. So if a sound permit is granted, bear in mind that if there are complaints, if police gets a call, the police department does deserve the right to essentially revoke the permit. So if there is the disturbance, if things are not compliant in terms of what the general public has for expectations, then the permit can be revoked, and it can be revoked by law enforcement.
Yes, that's clearly understood.
Very good. So we believe in freedom of speech, but we also believe it should not really infringe on the rights of owners. Council, do you have questions for Mr. Heath?
I don't have a question, but I do have a comment. Mr. Heath, I'm so impressed with how you've turned your life around, that's tremendous. And I love that you want to share that message to other people who could use it. But I have to tell you, I'm not a fan of giving somebody a permit to just hit the road in Cortland whenever they felt moved to do so and to preach over a megaphone. So I'm gonna have to vote against this.
I would ask, okay, Mr. Tidler, Bruce.
Yeah, I'd have to agree with Katie on the second part of that, that I certainly believe in people's right, wholeheartedly believe in their right to get on the proverbial soapbox and, and say with time in mind, and our public property. But I would be against right now, this such a wide-open request, using an amplifier, a sound system. I just don't think that'd be a good idea. I've never, I've never seen something like this come before us, that's just sort of open-ended to the end of the year and any place, so I think that would I would be against with the sound.
Kevin McCarthy.
I would have to share the concerns that have been voiced as well, and I-
I would have to share the concerns that have been voiced as well and I just wanted to clarify and make sure I understood, as far as the various locations, are there specific locations in mind or would it be, you know, potentially anywhere in the city?
What I'm thinking is, there has been times as I've given out food, that large groups of people come around because I do make myself known, I have gone down to South Ave, Union Street, or is that Union Ave, you guys know, South Ave and Union, I've gone up to, up on the hill near the high school, North Cliff Apartments, I've been there, I've been to the Penguin Trailer Park, I've gone around and being able to utilize my amplifier makes it so that I don't have to strain my voice cord as I'm willing to, it just makes it that much easier to bring people around and people are often curious to know why I am there giving out the food and so, and by the way, the food does come from the Food Bank of Center, New York, I pick up the pickup truckload basically, put it into my truck and I distribute it around the city. In doing this, I freely share, you know, John 3:16, if you don't know, is for God to love the world that he gave his one and only son, that whosoever believes in him shall not perish but have eternal life, for God so loved that he gave, so in my giving of the food, I am able to then give the message of John 3:16, the message of the gospel, the hope that has restored me to sanity when nothing else seemed to do so while I was in my addiction. So I hit these places that mean a lot to me, these houses that I use drugs in and simply to be able to use that amplification, especially in this type of way, is one of the ways that I would like to utilize it. And I do only do that once a month, currently, once a month I do this and it is sort of spread, sometimes it's on a Wednesday, when I'm able to pick up the food, sometimes a Friday, sometimes at two, sometimes at four. Again, as I said earlier, counsel, that I am totally aware of the bylaws in using amplification, I've read them thoroughly and if I was to have any sort of question, I would certainly come to someone of authority, at least a police officer, and discuss it before I would actually use the amplification.
Well.
Katie, one second, I think Troy had his hand up, am I right?
Yes. If we do move forward with this, I'd like to see some notification put on the website, I think we'd have to ask Mr. Heath to give us a schedule, obviously, I think we should give him the guidelines on what he wants to say and what his message is going to definitely be, it could be beneficial for a lot of people in our community, that's for sure, but I think there needs to be a lot of guidance, you know, and timing and, you know, so on and so forth with that, if we move forward with this.
Tom Michaels?
I'd like to ask Scott if he has a Plan B, looks like Plan A isn't headed the way he expected it to, I think, you know, I certainly agree that, you know, he has a lot of good intentions of getting a message out to some of these people, but the consensus is that probably not through amplified sound system driving through town at various hours, but perhaps a selected location.
All right, Tom, so as far as my expectations, I honestly do not have any coming to the table tonight, but as far as an alternative, it will simply be using my voice cord, I have a loud voice and I can amplify my voice, but for a shorter amount of time, so that would be the alternative, I just simply would not use my PA speaker and speak, obviously in a normal voice, I would have to, you know, raise my voice in these neighborhoods as I have been doing in the past and I'm sure that, you know, there has been no complaints filed in the last 20 months of my doing so.
Oh.
Jane Sullivan.
Thank you, so Mr. Heath, what occurs to me is, first of all, you're the best person to be doing this kind of ministry because you've been there and you speak the language and you know where to go and it's deeply appreciated. As far as the amplification goes, I'm still not in favor of it, even though I know better what you want to do, I feel that if we allow you to do it and we've gotten into trouble like this before, then we would open up the door to a lot of people wanting to amplify their message, whatever that may be, around Cortland and so I'm wondering if you have contacts in those places who you might call, who could help you round people up instead of driving up and shouting and using your voice, maybe you could create a phone tree or something where you could say, I've got a truck full of food, I'm headed up your way, get the people outside because I, you know, wanna, wanna talk to you guys and maybe that way your message could spread by word of mouth.
Yes, I have thought of similar types of ideas and most of the time, the people that I'm connected with, just the timing just has not set up correctly in order to do that and the outreach has been pretty off the cuff and there are certain people around the Cortland community that I am able to hit up every single month, but then there are just simply others where if you know anything about the Christian faith, being led by the Holy Spirit, as I do this type of thing, I will drive through the city and allow, we could say, divine appointments to occur, where say, there was one time I was going down Owego Street and I had looked down a side street, happened to be South Ave, and I saw children playing on the sidewalk and in the street, being drawn to children because Jesus loves children and I know where those children, so to speak, are at in their life, I would approach them, ask them for, you know, their parents and then they would come out, so again, just creating these on the spot types of opportunities, going back to your idea, it's not always that sufficient, however, I do understand, in a general sense, your idea as well as a couple others that I've had, it just seems to be that the sporadic approach for me is simply this, it's authentic, and I'm not saying that your idea couldn't be authentic, be authentic, but just in my style, in speaking the street language, it's home to me to do things continually the way that I have freely been doing them. I do understand the concerns that counsel has and that was just stated about, you know, basically opening up a can of worms, I do press though for my right to be able to do this and I'm not, you know, hard pressing about it, but I do feel that an opportunity ought to be allowed, but again, if counsel does not agree to that, I admonish you and I simply will not use my amplification and I will continue to do things as I have been doing. Oh, and as far as gathering up other people, that is actually in the works because as I have been looking at the traditional Americanized church, I see a stark difference between that and what is laid forth in the blueprint of scripture, according to Acts, chapter two, where there are, you know, gatherings quite often in small groups of people and people making disciples and I see this actually happening at the ends of my fingertips as I've been, you know, pursuing particular people over the many months I've been doing this and I'm seeing a light come to their eyes, I'm hearing stories from them saying, hey, you know, I haven't used in X amount of days and then, you know, they would relapse as for me to be expected, but there is a hope coming, so I will end up utilizing these people as they become more willing to become a part of this outreach and the church that I truly see being born from a street level.
Very good, I am gonna ask counsel if there's no more questions, we can move on to a vote. If there are no more questions, all those in favor of approving the sound device permit, please say aye. All opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
So Scott, sorry to tell you that currently not approved, but did have a suggestion from somebody in the community that you continue to reach out, find a group that you can coordinate as well, if that can be helpful and I think what you're hearing is that a lot of people agree that the more we can help one another in the community, it's the right path, this may not be a good step at this point in time, but welcome to reach out to me tomorrow or in the future and let's talk about how you're doing because the more we're helping one another, the stronger our community is.
I completely agree, counsel, thank you so much for your time tonight and it was a pleasure meeting you and I hope that likewise is said about me.
Yes, thank you, Scott. Our next agenda item, number four, resolution to accept, recognize and appropriate the following donations for the youth girl, give a donation from Mary Leary and also from Mr. Alex Hairfashions, motion to consider, Troy Beckwith, second, John Bennett, discussion.
Excellent, excellent donations, first of all, from my barber, Mr. Alex, and anybody that knows Mary Leary, knows Mary is such a wonderful person, thank you both.
Good, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes, so the Radio Porch Fest, just as a note of information, Radio Porch Fest is one of the donations, that was Porch Fest and it was broadcast for one of our local radio stations and then the dinner program is, we talked to John about this, opportunity for kids in the community cooking and eating what they're doing, so it's a great opportunity for youth in our community. Agenda item number five, resolution authorizing the issuance of up to 2.5 million in tax in anticipation notes from the City of Cortland, in anticipation of the collection of real estate taxes to be levied by the city for its fiscal year ending December 31st, 2021, Matt Cook, that's correct, next year's taxes, right? So last for a motion to consider, John Bennett, second, Katie Sullivan, discussion. Mac, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
There you are, loving the headset, good and clear. Mac, can you share with the general public?
With the general public, yes, I'll repeat a little bit about what was in my email. January in all city businesses and towns and villages is a cash stress month, I equate it very much to the Thursday before payday, you have the money coming in, but you don't have it today. Usually, it is not a problem, we spend about 27% of our total budget goes out in January and once again, I repeat, usually, and it has not been a problem, it's not been a problem in a long time for myself. Unfortunately, with COVID, two main sources of cash that comes in late in the year, sales tax from July, August and September and state revenue sharing, both of those come in December, it is appearing that they are going to be significantly lower than what we anticipate in a normal year. As you saw in my other email, June, or excuse me, July, sales tax was down 13%, July was down 33%, both, I think that this point in time, we should anticipate at least a 20% reduction in state aid, which comes in at the very end of December. So in order to prepare and not get into a crisis mode, and if we go into the January period, my recommendation is that we begin the work put in place now, the necessary borrowing and come back in perhaps November when we have a little bit more handle on what the real numbers may be, to see permission to actually place the note.
So this is a short term borrow, what's the estimate in terms of real dollars you think it will cost the city?
I have it in the packet, let me sort that, I think it's about $6,200 in interest and drafting of the resolution plus placement of the debt, hopefully, as I also put in my packet, is that we may be able to offset that and gain around $12,000 if we are in a position to early pay our $2 million in pension. New York allows you two opportunities to pay your pension costs, one on December 15th and then the final deadline is February 1st, they discount for the February payment, I think I have an analysis in the package that when I take the savings on the early prepayment, that more than offsets the cost of issuing this note.
Well, this would definitely help keep us from bouncing into checks and I can tell you, for counsel and the general public, this is a conversation that many municipalities and other governmental agencies are having as well, so school districts, cities, towns, villages, counties, this is an important topic, so this is not unique to the City of Cortland.
Once again, this resolution does not authorize the actual placement of the note, that can be done as late as December 1st, this is just to begin the paperwork and the negotiations with banks in order to, what I'm gonna say is get in line, get in line first, so that we do have the option, if we have to exercise this option.
Mayor?
Bruce Tidler. Yeah, I echo what Mac said, I'm gonna support this because I think it's, we're being proactive just in case and I think it's better to prepare now, based on everything that we're seeing, I don't doubt a 20% reduction is coming down the pike unless the federal government steps in and helps out, that doesn't look like it's on the horizon anytime soon, so I support this because I'd rather prepare for this now than me scrambling, you know, a few months from now, trying to figure out what we're gonna do, so I don't like the idea of borrowing money, but on the same hand, you know, the way that Mac has prepared this and figured out a way to offset the costs, et cetera, I think it's a good step forward, so it's, you know, as you say, hope is not a plan, so this is a plan and then we can hope for the best, but we have a plan in place, so I'm gonna support this.
Further questions, Mr. Cook, Troy Beckwith.
I'm agreeing with Bruce a little bit, but if Tom said, what about Plan B, you know, we're gonna be 33% down, we've still got another quarter left, is this gonna be enough? I know Mac doesn't have a, you know?
The projections that I've been sharing with counsel, the cash flow projections that I've been sharing with counsel since March, has us at the $3 million level going into January, we're going to spend about $3 million in operation notes and then, so we have many fixed obligations, workers comp, pension, insurance, which comes out, has to be paid in January, so the projection right now is at the 2.5 million dollars, when added to the $3 million that we should have at the beginning of January, it's efficient to pay the operating costs as they come due until we begin to see the tax proceeds come in the fourth week of January. tax proceeds come in in the fourth week of January and, and, and proceed into February with tax collection.
I just personally don't see the tax revenue coming in like everybody thinks it's gonna be. I mean, there's a lot of people struggling and that's usually what the, one of the few things, people pay less unfortunately, but that's just my opinion.
Historically, um, we collect about a little over 75% of, of our total levy in February. Uh, it, we have not seen a fallout this year yet. We just closed the second, the second installment period, we collected 93%, 93.1% this year, which is the same percentage to the, to the point one that we did last year. I think the, I think the, the question in our property tax is not the total levy, but our ability to collect the remaining 7%. We usually only collect about 98% of our tax levy in any one year. So we're at 93 right now. We don't anticipate ever getting over 98. It's gonna be that, that 5% that may be subject to those, uh, ramifications that you just talked about.
But Mac, your estimate is that this would be enough to get us through the financial crush potential of if we are short in terms of people paying taxes that we would be able to manage, but we would not be bouncing checks through the months of January.
I would, I, I would hope so. I, I have, you know, historically, our taxpayers are very, very crunk, uh, even in the last recession in 2000, 2008, they're kind of mounting up in my life these days. Um, is that we did not experience, uh, a delay in tax collection in the, in the first installment period. Uh, we've been very, very consistent for about a generation and that's attributed to our taxpayers and, and their promise and, uh, perhaps an appreciation of some of the services that they receive for it.
More preparing for the worst case. Katie Sullivan?
I don't know what alternative we have is the problem. So I think that this is our best, um, and to be proactive and I appreciate you putting it together, Mac. Thank you.
Once again, I'd like to repeat myself again. This is not authorizing the actual borrowing. As I said in my email, I do not think that the city of Cortland will be the only tax local government that will come into the year end and have to play this card. It's rare in the municipal business to have to play this card. However, these are very rare times with, with the fall off of sales tax and the pending cuts in state aid that we've come to rely on from the state of New York. So I don't wanna be at the end of the line. I would rather have this in place, um, now where there is some time and hopefully never have to come back to you and exercise it. I'm gonna be quite frank, I don't expect, I do expect them when I have to come back and, and ask you for permission to exercise the note. But I, I do expect that. But I, I want to put it in place now so that we are keeping as many pulls in our tool belt as we possibly can and we go into what's gonna be a very difficult first of the year.
Okay, further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mac.
Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda item number six, resolution to approve and transfer $7,000 from the wastewater savings ERNR to the capital account, um, ND digesters phase three to cover the cedarwood engineering and heat process invoices from 2019 through 2024 for work on the biogas generator. Motion to consider. John Bennett, second, Katie Sullivan and Bruce Adams is here if anybody wants to hear about what the biogas generator is.
Are we generating energy again, Bruce?
Uh, we are. Uh, Martin Energy did an excellent job on the repair and the generator is, uh, working at full tilt.
Great.
All right, good. No further questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. Number seven, resolution to accept, recognize and appropriate 1,000, a $1,000 donation to the Cortland 9/11 Memorial Foundation from a John Brown. Motion to consider. Jackie Chapman, second, Katie Sullivan, discussion.
What a wonderful gesture. What a wonderful and generous donation.
Agreed.
Yes. Is there, I just have a quick question on, I, I agree, it's a gen, very generous and I thought that the ceremony was, uh, spot on, you know, just, just, uh, this, uh, it's what I'm looking for. It was the solemnness of the, of the event just, just came across, you know, from, especially for those of us that remember that. I'm just curious, is, is there a specific appropriation for this $1,000? I mean, is there something we're gonna use it for? Is there a problem already with the memorial or is it just sort of help with maintenance down the road? I, I'm, I support it, I'm just curious as to if there's a need right away.
Looking for Paul Sandy. Paul, are you on?
No, uh, Paul. Chief, uh, but from what I understand, I think they want to try to get a camera on the monument and that money might go towards a, a camera.
Okay. Thanks, chief. All right, further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, none opposed and for the record, that vote was eight zero. Bill Carpenter has joined us, welcome, Bill. Um, I, yeah, I would like to point out and echo Mr. Tyler's statements and sentiments. It, it was difficult, mind-boggling for me when recently, last year, we had the discussion about high school seniors and people who had not been alive when this occurred because for some of us, myself included, uh, it still in some respects seems very recent. And our ability to come together as a community, both locally and throughout our country, was very important and I commend the efforts. Uh, I, I give Paul Sandy a lot of credit because he led the charge, but I know that there's a number of people throughout the city and beyond that were very involved. And to everybody, um, everybody who contributed in terms of the memorial and the event and as I said, to everybody who has, uh, been supportive, it's things like this that really help us recognize the value of community and I thank you with sincere and profound voice of appreciation. Agenda item number eight, resolution to accept the fire prevention and safety grant through the Assistance to Firefighter Grant Program, the amount of $32,000 with a required match of $1,000, which will be paid with a donation from Cortland Produce. The grant will be used to purchase and install fire detectors and carbon monoxide detectors in one and two family residences. Uh, we have a motion to consider. John Bennett, second, Troy. And is that Mike, time chief here to speak to it?
Uh, I is, I am. I'd be happy to answer any questions there is. Pretty straightforward, I think the agenda item says it all.
Well, I'd like to, Mayor?
Mr. Tyler.
Again, I, I just wanna publicly acknowledge, I mean, I, I'm not sure if everybody in our community understands the talented individuals we have working for the city and all the different departments and the grants that they apply for and, you know, I mean, Bruce just talked about finding ways for us to generate energy out of, you know, our wastewater plant and I, I, I understand Captain Ten Kate was a, a big, uh, player in writing this grant and I know those are not easy and, you know, and I, I'm not just, just to single him out, but I think this is a good chance for us to sort of recognize the, the people that do above and beyond and help us create and find resources that we otherwise wouldn't have. And I, I think sometimes the general public isn't really aware of the, the skill set that our employees have. So I just wanted to acknowledge that this seemed like a good time to do that, that's all.
Yeah.
You're here.
All right, no further. If there's no questions for Mike, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries and Captain Ten Kate, since we've got you on the hot seat, this is for one and two family residences. Uh, is there a timeframe and I'm, I'm sure we will potentially be getting questions about, uh, people who may need or how are we gonna go about this? What do you think the next steps are?
Uh, so we have two, um, our original grant was for, um, smoke and then some CO detectors, some of each. Uh, New York State has changed the fire code significantly with the new revision in May that requires a CO detector essentially everywhere they require a smoke detector. Um, in light of that, we are going to request an amendment to change the grant to be buying combination units rather than some of each, um, with the location requirement change that, that just makes more sense. Uh, so we'll be doing an amendment, uh, simultaneous to that. We're gonna look at procuring the smoke detectors, uh, with the amount of the money involved that will, we'll have to do a competitive bid to do that. So it'll probably take us one to two months before we actually have them in hand. Um, the grant is good for a month, but, uh, excuse me, the grant is good for a year, but any, uh, detectors that we have left at the end of that year, um, we can still use. So that, you know, the grant will be there until we use all the detectors.
Katie Sullivan?
How many do you think you'll be able to get of the combination, um, CO2 and smoke detectors? That sounds pricey.
Um, they are and the sealed units are, um, they, they're, they're around the, um, retail, they're, they're in the 40 to 50 dollar price range. Um, hoping to, um, with the buying power that we're gonna have, buying, um, 32, $33,000 worth, um, hopefully we can get the price down significantly. Um, last time when, when we had this grant, um, in the range of 10 years ago, uh, Skyline Electric, we partnered with them, um, they actually sold us their detectors at, at cost. They made no profit from it and they, they did that to help the community out. Um, you know, if, if they're willing to do that again, hopefully that works out, um, or, or we'll partner with somebody else. The, the, the most we can get, um, you know, hopefully we can get, uh, 1,000 to 1,500 of them would be the goal.
All right, good. Troy Beck with.
Mike, you guys are using the new ones now, they're, well, I, I call them batteryless, batteryless, but they have battery on them, but they're good for 10 years. Is that correct?
Correct. That's correct.
And what they use now, they don't have to worry about moving around and changing batteries every year. You put them up, they're good for 10 years.
Right. And that, that's, that's really a much better thing. Um, there, there's a couple of really big advantages to that. Um, obviously the, uh, they last for 10 years is great with no battery changes. And the other big advantage to that is, is after 10 years, they're gone and you can get a new one. Uh, we, we, that's, you know, obviously the biggest thing we run into is dead batteries or missing batteries. And then the, the other big factor that we run into over time is detectors that are 30, 40, 50 years old that, that just don't work anymore and people think if they keep putting batteries in, they work. So, you know, these units with the 10-year sealed batteries are really, they really help us in a lot of ways from the fire department.
Uh, another advantage, Mike, is that, uh, they can't take the batteries out, uh, if they don't like it, uh, beeping all the time.
That, that's very true.
They have to adjust the problem.
Some of them are creative though. We found them in the yard, we found them in dumpsters and things like that, but, uh, where there's a will to, to disable them, there's a way.
You gotta be careful about dumpster fires. All right, so, um, we, we did have a motion to second and we voted, correct? And then I put the captain on the hot seat. Captain Ten Kate, great job. Keep up the great work.
Thank you.
All right, window item number nine, this consideration of resolution approved local laws restrict the marking of curbs. We have a motion to consider. John Bennett, second, Troy Beck with, discussion.
Um, I see Rick sent the, uh, the drafted, uh, law, I guess you would call it, um, I didn't, unless I overlooked it, I didn't see anything that was addressed for the ones that are already painted, what are we gonna do with them?
If you look at section four B, it says any such marking existing at the time of the passing of this local law shall be removed on or before April 3rd, 2021.
Okay, I must have overlooked it. Like I said, I know you got it in there.
There was a, a, a couple of drafts that went out as I was working on it and, uh, I think I finally got it right.
Okay. Should we say in there what they're gonna remove it with or if they gotta be painted over with? I mean, the stuff's not gonna come off easy on some of them, but I guess we'll address that as a, I don't know, one-on-one basis, I guess.
Yeah, I think that's the only way to do it and I don't think that we can draft a law that would be able to handle that.
A lot of them just use latex paint, so it's just.
Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries, item. Agenda item number 10, resolution approved process, uh, with regard to sidewalk painting. That's it. Ja, Jackie Chapman?
Oh, I was pretty, jump into, to motion to.
Jump in for a motion or? A motion to approve by Jackie, do we have support? Or wait, is this discussion?
It's just discussion. Could be just discussion, there's no, uh, local law.
I read the buzzword, I read resolution, I understand. Um, so discussion regarding process for sidewalk painting. Uh, who would like to get started? Bill Carpenter?
I'm still under the green, I, I'm under the belief that it's private property, um, and they gotta maintain it, they gotta fix it. So that's just my belief. I think it shouldn't be a local law on that.
So in favor?
Uh, well, I understand the private property considerations. I have strong concerns and I'm not in favor for it from the perspective of the safety of, um, you know, I, I think that we've talked a little bit about sidewalks currently, you know, you might have a root under it, there might be heating sidewalks, at least at the moment where it's not marked, you, it's a little bit clearer to see. Um, it's not painted one solid color, it's not painted various colors. Um, so I have concerns about the aspect of safety with that, with the traction on a sidewalk too, um, both from a visibility standpoint. Uh, so I, I really, I, I think that, um, painting sidewalks could lead to other problems that, that we really wanna be mindful of before we approve something like this.
Jackie Chapman?
Um, and one of our overall missions is always to be trying to beautify neighborhoods, trying to upgrade neighborhood, uh, trying to, you know, just make neighborhoods more pleasant all the time. Um, understanding that it is private property, you also get a lot of, when a property is not kept up, you know, everyone comes down on it. Uh, and with the same sense of sidewalk, sidewalk messaging, et cetera. If it were done in a permanent way, you know, with paints that don't wash off, not, you know, anything more than watercolor or chalk, just seems that it's, uh, not beautifying and not making for a pleasant neighborhood. That's my opinion. not beautifying and not making for a pleasant neighborhood. That's my opinion on this matter. And so I, I don't feel right about
Uh, Katie Solomon.
It's up to chalk and, uh, washable paint.
We'll move to Katie Solomon and then Tom Michaels.
I would have to agree with both of my fellow councilwomen. I think we regulate other things about private property, property, and it's fine to regulate. There are not, you can paint your sidewalks. I'm all for, um, sidewalk chalk, something that rinses off. But I don't think people should be painting their sidewalks any that they want to.
Uh, Tom Michaels.
I'm thinking that, uh, if there was anything out there in the books, that, uh, legal would have certainly come across it. And, uh, I'm sure that Rick did his due diligence and, and tried to find something. And it's, and it's no different than if your neighbor, uh, painted their house pink. You know, we certainly can't tell them they can't paint it pink. You just have to, uh, accept the, the color the way it is and, and move on.
Bruce Pedler.
Yeah, this seems to be one of those issues of the private property, individual freedom versus the public good and huge believer in the First Amendment. And, um, I'm also for better, for worse, an eternal optimist. Um, it could be that people, if they decide to paint their sidewalks, they can be putting all sorts of um, positive messages on there. I don't really think too many people are gonna paint the sidewalks. It's not happening now. A few may. I, I believe though people have the right for the, and we do have zoning and we have codes and I, and I get all that. I don't think this would fall under that. I, Cat makes a good point about safety issues. And I think if some landlord or homeowner wanted to paint their sidewalk, they certainly would be, um, it would benefit them to give that serious considerations about what they might be doing to cause an unsafe situation because as, as I understand from corporate counsel, it's private property, but the public has the right of way through there. So you can't do something to uh, endanger or impede the right of way. So that's something I have to look at. But I, I think that people should have individual right if they wanna make these messages. And just as a side, this is America. You know, uh, none of us likes being told what we can and cannot do. I one of the ways to make Americans angry is to tell them they can't do something that they wouldn't have thought to do to begin with until you said you can't do it. So, you know, I think in some instances we created an issue that isn't really an issue. And, um, I'm gonna agree with Bill and some of the colleagues. I think this is a, a private property issue. And I really believe if people wanna make some kind of message, First Amendment message, they should have the right to do that. So that's where I stand on it. And those are my reasons. And I, I have to say, I haven't gotten a lot of calls on this. I've gotten a few and they go basically yes, no, and I don't care. So it's not, I'm, I'm not getting a lot of, uh, uh, feedback. I actually made some phone calls and, and mostly was, you know, it's really not a big issue to me. So if it is, I, I suspect that we will be, I will be giving some phone calls if this comes up for some kind of resolution later on down the future. But right now I'm just not seeing it. And I, I really believe in the rights of the individual in this instance to have that, uh, freedom of speech.
Further discussion. Uh, Jackie Chapman.
Uh, I just wanted to just point out, there's a, uh, constituent on Delaware Ave who ever since COVID started, literally every three or four days she changes her messaging and as it washes off, she's been put wonderful messaging that, um, everyone stops, agrees, and people stop and discuss. And she told me one day that she, that's part of why she has continued doing it because it creates discussion and creates, you know, people talking to each other. Um, that is a valuable resource on a sidewalk. Um, fear is messaging that is going to divide neighborhoods, messaging that is going to um, not want to talk to a neighbor because makes you feel unsafe or makes you feel unsafe. Where I feel, you know, that we're going to have to start paying attention to it when something that is of a invasive to everybody's rights happens. That makes sense.
Any further discussion? John Bennett.
While it might be private property, we could still do, require a permit and new regulations on it. I mean, for example, people have private property in front of their house, but we do not allow them to park a vehicle in front of their house. We do not allow them to put a vehicle in the front of their house with a for sale sign on it. Things like that. Uh, yes, if you're gonna add in addition to your house, you have to do a permit because then you are doing something that codes will have to let the assessor knows because it affects your property value. But we do enforce codes on other things as far as green space for new property, um, driveway size, all of that. So while it's private property, a sidewalk, um, and again, this would have to come from Rick. I don't see why we could not do a permit process. And then the permit process separate between something temporary like children drawing something with chalk. Because as Jackie says, the person on Delaware who happens to be the same person and made a very generous donation, um, she has put very inspirational messages on her sidewalks because I've seen it. But there is a difference between chalk and paint. So I would ask Rick to look into it and to see if it could be a permit process. And then we could debate as far as the price and, and whatever and go from there. That's the right way to do it.
Okay, so this is a discussion item and we have the opportunity if council desires to pass a resolution or to ask Corporation Counsel, as John just said, for research or to, um, potentially investigate the permit process. Is there a recommendation anybody from council would like to put forward at this point?
If you're going to do it, I think the way Joan suggested is the way to do it.
Okay. So how about if we make this two questions? The first would be, does council want to go forward with the opportunity to formally paint? And then the second question, if so, uh, shall we ask Corporation Counsel to look into a permitting process? Agreed?
Okay.
Yes. Um, and I, I'm comfortable, any questions or I would call this a straw poll. I don't believe this needs a resolution. Rick, if I'm incorrect, let me know. We're just trying to see if, what direction we're headed. Okay, so show of hands, uh, how many people would like to allow the painting of sidewalks with some sense of, I'll use the word permanency as opposed to chalk or of something else that might wash off. So the idea is painting and something that would last through some basic elements. Uh, can we get a verbal yes and show of hands? I'm not sure how close this will be. So I see one. How many people wanna say no to painting of sidewalks? And I think we got a couple of people that did not vote. But if we are one to four, then at this point, is the direction to Corporation Counsel to draft language that makes it clear that painting of sidewalks with any sense of permanency is not legal in the city court?
Yes.
Yeah.
No.
Bruce, do you say no?
Again, I'm just, you know, I don't wanna, I don't wanna belabor this, but no, I, I just think we just leave it as it is. And if it becomes an issue, then we could address it. I think we're making an issue that doesn't have to be an issue. So you, you gave me two, two things to, to offer a vote on. Neither one of them were what I was thinking. So that's why I didn't vote, Merrick. I'm like, so that's, that's, that's.
I agree with Bruce. I agree with Bruce. Leave it alone.
Uh, Mr. Carpenter.
Yeah, I, I, I don't, have we ever, have we had any issues? I don't even know why this came up with the sidewalks. Have we had, anybody paint their sidewalks? Like anything else we've had or, I mean, the curving is one thing. I've seen that all over the city. Have we had any issues with the sidewalks at all?
No.
Okay, so I think we should just leave it as is and not touch it. It's just,
Okay.
I don't think really we're gonna be having any issue with, with somebody painting their sidewalks. I really don't think so.
And if it becomes a problem, then we.
I agree with that, you know?
Okay.
So show of hands, how many people are in favor of let sleeping dogs lie? We don't need to take action at this point. One, two, three, four, five, six. All right, Rick, off the hook. Off the rate discussion to have.
Off the hook until we beat again.
You're off the hook for about two weeks. Number eleven, consideration of resolution authorized mayor to enter into a contract with the New York State Parks Recreation and Historic Preservation for Fire Station Window Restoration Private. Motion to consider. Bill Carpenter second. Katie Solomon, discussion.
Yay.
This has been a long time coming. So for those who are unaware, uh, we do have, this has taken a little bit of time. We had a application to receive the grant to replace the windows in the fire station. And it is an historic structure. So replacing the windows is much more complicated than typical structure would be. On, on top of the fact that it's over a hundred years old. You need to treat buildings with historical significance appropriately. Uh, but we're to the point where we have uh, an agreement that will move forward and will improve the insulation and improve the safety, I think in general of our fire station. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Carries. And agenda, item number twelve. Resolution authorized mayor to enter into a contract with the New York State Office of Port Administration for the annual port cleaning and minor repairs contracts. Motion to consider. Jackie Chapman second. Tom Michaels, discussion. So it's a hefty packet. This is essentially an annual contract with the port system of which the, uh, city hosts here to help uh, to help offset costs of maintenance. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And opposed? Carries. Then item number thirteen, discussion regarding request for overnight parking to be allowed on Hubbard Street. Uh, discussion at this point. So this did go before the Public Safety Commission and it was not approved. The commission did not uh, recommend to council to approve overnight parking. And Troy, back with.
Um, yes, I attended the meeting the other night and, um, just, I don't know if you're all aware of what had really happened. The majority of the, the, one of the biggest reasons why it didn't go through because there really wasn't, um, they wanted a lot more information, which I said we would hopefully get to them and get it back in front of them again. So.
Okay.
Say again?
I just, that's good to know. I wondered what their objections were.
Because there really wasn't a solid plan. Um, we did have a solid plan. Um, as Adam said, there was quite a few people who signed the position, uh, the petition. I did not get one negative call. I got a lot of calls from people obviously in my ward that I didn't get one negative call. They're, they're all looking forward to us doing something. Um, uh, Nick Doby and Chris Bastoki had a few concerns. I think we could work them out. Um, the biggest thing is, you know, obviously if we do it for one street, we're gonna do it for the rest or, you know, it'll probably come forward if the rest of the city wants, wants us to do something. But I propose to do something and do it as a pilot plan like Adam, you know, has mentioned. And I'm totally in favor of that. Whether we do it one side, odd and even, or strictly one side. A lot of cities, if you don't move your car, you get plowed in. You get plowed in, you shovel out. End of story. Um, TPW didn't see a problem with getting vehicles down through there to plow. Um, so I really don't, I think we can address the rest of their issues.
So Troy, uh, considering it's in your neighborhood, what you see as a path forward here, is there a recommendation that you would like to make for consideration?
Yes, I'd like to make a, um, a consideration or whatever to, to, to allow it, odd and even or?
I'd like to wait till we hear from the commission. I really would like to have their approval. And a plan, a plan like you were saying, a solid plan.
Um, we can get you a plan. Um, I'm gonna highly recommend that the commission doesn't always meet. Um, there hasn't been a lot of activity going on. So I'd like to, if they don't have a meeting last, uh, next month, that, uh, that we'll make the decision on it, which we have the right to do whether they in favor of it or not in favor of.
Can we ask them to meet? Once the materials are all together? Rick, what would you?
We can do that, but I don't know if they can.
So if there's, the commission meets when there's a, uh, meet when there's agenda items, uh, not, there is not always agenda items every month. Bill Carpenter had his hand raised. Bill?
Yeah, Troy, do you think maybe if you, would you wanna just do summer months and winter months, park in the driveway? You wanna do something like that or is it trial period to try it? Or how do you wanna? You, you thought about six months and six months or what?
I think if we're gonna try it, I think we ought to try it full board. Now, see, that's gonna test it right off the get-go. If it doesn't work, we can come back, but and Kristen, you know.
So try it for a year and then see what happens.
And then, you know, we'll have to address it through the rest of the city, what we're gonna do and so on and so forth, you know. There's a lot of laws that'll have to be changed, you know, obviously we can't park down there now. Rick will have to, you know, make laws, uh, addendums and all that. The city police should be able to ticket people or not ticket people, so.
Katie Solomon, did you have your hand raised?
I wanted to know what Rick was gonna add.
It, it was addressed. You can direct the Department of Public Works Commission to conduct an investigation on any issue that you feel they are related to.
Thank you.
Tom Michaels.
Uh, I have a question for either Rick or Mac. Uh, would this require our insurance to be adjusted?
No, no, not at all.
Just wanna make sure that we have that covered as well.
If this is the direction, um, in terms of implementation, if this is the direction that council would like to go in, I would strongly encourage that we look at implementation in a warm weather month. Something like April. Because if we make significant changes in terms of on-street parking and we're doing it during cold weather months where we have snow vents, ice, et cetera, it'd be nice to have a couple of months to figure out some of the problems that will exist regardless of the weather as opposed to potentially stacking problems on top, on top of one another.
I agree.
Yeah, I agree with the mayor.
Uh, waiting until April would also give a little lead time for making sure that all the plans were, were in place too.
Okay, so it sounds like we have some directions, some consensus. Uh, Troy, you, you and I can catch up and try to make sure that we're meeting what some of the expectations are and see about uh, moving this forward in appropriate manner.
Totally agree with you.
Thank you. Very good. Jenna, item, my gosh, number 14, update on Portland Forward. Uh, Cat McCarthy, would you like to talk a little bit about the community read?
Sure, I can share an update on that. So for those, um, last week we voted to move forward with it, but there will be a community read. Uh, the open, currently, uh, sign-ups are being accepted through September 18th. And again, this is in partnership with the Courtland Free Library, uh, to read the book, The Hate U Give. And the reason the book was chosen was because it is one that's been in print for quite some time. There's been a number of resources out developed around it. Um, additionally, that book was chosen kind of with the concept of mirrors and windows. Um, books can sometimes mirror back experiences we've had and we can understand, you know, kind of learn from our own experiences by seeing them in books. But we can also kind of get a window into others' experiences that maybe we didn't have. And so that was part of the choice for this book was to div, choose something that might help some of us understand other people's experiences, understand some of the challenges and, uh, different experiences that people are facing right now. So, um, I would also like to note, you know, some of the issues it talks about is racism. Uh, you know, the main character's uncle is a police officer, so it does talk a little bit and kind of go through some of the challenges and the tension that, that folks see. Um, but the idea and the intent behind this project is that it is a voluntary program. People can sign up to read the book and then discussions will start in October. So the idea is, is that the book's broken into sections. Um, folks can read a section and then have a discussion about it as a group. Um, and again, it's voluntary. The idea is to help generate an open community conversation for those who want to participate to kind of begin to talk about some of the issues that, that we see. And, uh, as far as it, it's, uh, getting copies of the book as well, the library is willing to help people, um, whether they borrow one from the library or help them find a copy as well. So that's another thing that we've thought about as far as trying to make sure that, that folks have the, the accessibility to the book as well.
Very good. And, um, was curious about it. I have signed up. It was really quick and easy to do the registration. And then last night I actually found an audio book and, um, looking forward to a deadline and listening to segments the night or a couple hours before the deadline. Cat, thank you and thank you for organizing.
Cat, hey, I just have a question. Hey, Cat, could you send that, resend that email that you had sent with the information on this? So I, I hope that I couldn't find it. So if you could just resend that, I'd appreciate that, so I can get that out.
I'd be happy to. Yeah, it would be great if others can help share the word, um, just so that people are aware that this is going on and they have the option to sign up. The signup form is on the city, the, the Courtland Free Library's website, and I believe there's also a link from our website as well.
Thanks.
All right, so update COVID-19 and response. So there's a couple of things that are happening and, uh, it's important for us to keep our finger on the pulse, so to speak, throughout the community and beyond. We were more than just fortunate in terms of the impact that COVID has had with regard to the number of cases through the springtime and into the summer. And as most of us know, when we hit August, we were very low in terms of the cases. And with the fall semester rolling about, where you have our younger kids going back to school, returning college students, and then you throw in things like the Labor Day weekend, will people have a family trip or getaway planned? Things that maybe many do traditionally, even in a year like this, there's a desire to see people do things. So, uh, we knew that there was a potential for an increase and here we are, middle of September, and we are about, I believe the number I saw was 58 cases in the county. And we are aware, actually I believe it was 58 yesterday, and we broke into 60. And we are aware that there is a significant number of those cases are related to SUNY Corson and the return of the student body. So there's a couple of things that are happening. There is a new SUNY chancellor. The chancellor is the person who is responsible for overseeing all of the two and four-year schools within the SUNY. And over the past two and maybe three days, two weeks and three days that he has been on the job, he has been very active getting out and visiting different communities that have SUNY institutions. And he was actually here in Portland on Sunday. So I had the opportunity to meet with Chancellor Malatris, uh, Eric Bitterbaum, the college president, and his staff. And I know in the afternoon, the chancellor was headed over to Tompkins Courtland Community College. But the conversation on Sunday was, uh, very helpful. Um, we've had communications over the summer, leading up to and since. School has been back in session. The city and the college have been communicating regularly. And having the chancellor come in, there was a number of initiatives that the campuses taking, that was able to bounce off the chancellor and look for, okay, what are you hearing at other institutions? What do they do? So a couple of things that people may have read about that are coming to fruition. One that directly impacts, uh, or city will be involved in is wastewater testing. So many moons ago, I believe it may have been back as far as June, uh, Bruce Adams came to us and he said, hey, we might be able to test wastewater and see if there is RNA, if there's remnants of COVID in the wastewater. And, uh, as a reminder to those of us who know and some who may not know, we have been doing that at the wastewater treatment plant. And last week, Bruce, if I'm correct, we did see trace amounts. It was not that it was detectable in terms of our wastewater treatment plant, correct?
Uh, the sample from last week was actually up into the quantifiable level. So that was a step up from detectable, which we had had two such instances, uh, previously.
So thi, this kind of mimics what we've seen in the community, that there are some cases going up, we're seeing in the wastewater. So to me that says, all right, there, there is validity in the science and this might be a valuable tool. Because when we first having, started having this discussion, okay, we can test, but what's the value to it? What, how, how do we use this to our advantage? Well, the good news is that on campus with the residence halls, uh, SUNY Portland is undertaking tast, uh, testing of the wastewater coming from the residence halls. And the idea is that if you see this kind of spike or increase, then you know that you need to test the individuals in that residence hall. And we're having discussions in terms of the city, can we break out the city in terms of different neighborhoods? And have a better understanding, if we are having cases throughout the community, what neighborhoods those are occurring in. And then if that does happen, then we can say, hey, if you are in this area, if you live in these five or six blocks, we recommend that you really pay attention to what's happening because we're seeing spike. Uh, be extra diligent about your precautions and potentially get tested, even if you feel it's just a cough. Temperature's up a little bit. Get tested because we're seeing a spike in the neighborhood where you live. Now, if we're doing that, we'll hopefully be able to do more in terms of figuring out contact tracing. Uh, the campus does have an app for the college students where they, on the phone, they answer six or seven questions. And if there's anything that indicates that they may have, uh, been exposed or have COVID-19, when they fill it out and they say yes, then that alerts the health services on campus. And then that also initiates contact tracing from the campus. Uh, there's several discussions that have been taking place on campus. They keep refining and improving the system. And, uh, as we're going forward, always looking for ways to do it better, same way that we are here in the city. Good news as well, the campus talked about wanting to test 500 to 1,000 students each week. Uh, they're going to be able to do that mostly because SUNY Upstate has the capability for what is called pooled testing. And pooled testing is basically testing 12 people at once. If it's negative, you move that sample up, you go on to the next batch. If it's positive, then you test each of the 12 samples individually. So there is steps being taken on campus and there's steps being taken by the city to try to work on making sure that we are identifying where potential cases are and then working to make sure we're communicating about what the expectations are. Which brings me to my next point. First two weekends, the traditional movement weekends were to college and then the weekend after, things were pretty quiet for the most part through a lot of the city. In addition, our traditional student neighborhoods. This last weekend, there were some calls, there were some concerns about an increase in noise and an increase in foot traffic. And internally with the city, we're having the discussion about making sure residents are aware, and this is all residents, that behaviors that are inappropriate in terms of being able to fight COVID-19, one such example would be a large gathering. Large gatherings are not appropriate. And this is a year that we're not looking to negotiate on this. Large gatherings are not appropriate and are not going to be tolerated. So we've talked, Rick Van Donzel, the city attorney, and I, about the potential for nuisance property. If there is a property that is deemed to be a potential risk of public health hazard, and if there are a number of large gatherings being held at a property, the ability to essentially shut down said property and force it to be vacated by whomever lives there. This would be an extreme step, but in the interest of the public's health, I firmly believe that we need to take advantage of whatever tools we need to make sure that we are protecting people throughout the city. I've had several citizens express concern and I understand because I think we're all at the same place. We don't want to see the numbers increase exponentially. But I would caution all of us against a divisive mentality. And what I ask for is an inclusive mentality. And what I mean there is that there's been some contacts that I've received talking about, why is the college in session? Send them home. They shouldn't be here. And I have responded that anybody who chooses to live in Portland, and it doesn't matter if it's somebody who was born here, somebody who chose to move here for a profession, somebody who chose to come here to attend school, Portland residents are Portland residents. And it would not be appropriate for us to start to segment our population. When we start to divide and we start talking about people in our community, our neighbors, our friends, and we're treating people differently, that is not a road that I intend to go down. What we need to do is we need to be good partners and we need to work with one another throughout our city. If there are concerns, and it can be any property, because I can tell you that there have been complaints that came in that were year-round residents, properties that people were having gatherings over the summer, that were a little bit large. If there are concerns, then yes, we need to address them. But I caution everybody against painting any group of people with a broad brush. Because when we're talking about 6,500, close to 7,000 college students, and yes, there might be some who are misbehaving, and yes, there are some that, while their statement up in the college was masked up or pack up, several have had to pack up. So the college is taking this seriously and we as community members need to take this seriously. And as we all experience maybe a little bit more stress than we have ordinarily, we do need to remember that that additional stress might make it a little bit more difficult for us to tolerate behaviors that we really shouldn't have to tolerate. But let's pull together and when there are examples and there are issues, notify law enforcement, notify code, and let's make sure that we're dealing with them appropriately. The last thing that we need to do is to allow challenges that are external to pull us apart from who we are. And I am confident that as we move forward, we are going to be able to keep the curve from spiking. There's a lot of actions that we have all taken. We have all sacrificed. But we need to continue to press both and we need to continue to work together. And I know that as we come together as a community, we will be better for it, stronger for it. And we'll get to a place where we're all happy with what we've accomplished. One of the actions that I've, um, taken, talked with John McNerney in terms of youth bureau, as we know, we opened up basketball courts a couple of weeks ago. Uh, there's been too much traffic in terms of people having the opportunity and enjoying. And I hate to do this because we've had a lot of limits in terms of what our youth can do in the community. But in the interest of the public health, we need to close the basketball courts again for a couple of weeks. And I understand that this pushes us into the cold weather months. Uh, it's not what I want to do, but it's what I feel we need to do as a community, that we need to make sure we are taking steps individually and collectively so that we're avoiding gatherings where we can potentially risk disease transmission. Thoughts or comments from council? Mr. Tyblin?
Yeah, I just, if I could, I'd like to share some thoughts with the general public because I've had some questions about some actions at the college. They wanted to know why the college didn't do certain things in the beginning of the year. I'm not, uh, advocating for or against anything they did or didn't do. I'm just, I just wanted to get some information out there if I could. Uh, I was able, is, is it okay if I take a few minutes and do that?
Go ahead, Bruce.
I was at a meeting yesterday, fortunately attended by college administrators and the healthcare professionals, uh, doctors and, uh, others that are involved with putting together the plan to keep the students safe. And one of the questions that's come to me is, why didn't the college test the students before they arrived? Or why didn't they test them when they did arrive? And the answer is, you know, there's several reasons for it. One of the things that I discovered is the college, this summer they are all set to, they had trouble getting some, some of the equipment that they needed. For instance, for instance, they were all set to get, uh, some rapid testing equipment. This summer around the last minute, it got deployed to the south. There's nothing they could do about that. Um, as far as the testing before they get here, as was pointed out to me, sometimes those tests are not accurate. Somebody could get the test and then still, uh, you know, four days later, um, he infected with the virus. And then there's, so there's pre-arrival and then there's arrival testing. And our college chose not to do that. They had a lot, they had other things in place. And again, not to point fingers or anything, but Oswego, SUNY Oswego did have on-arrival testing, according to the Post-Standard this morning. And when those students showed up, they only had a handful. I think they said three. So they did do that testing, as some people want to know why our college didn't. And our college had some very good reasons why they didn't do them. Part of it is equipment, part of it is the validity of the test. Some of those tests are not evidence-based. And, uh, I'm hearing this from the medical professionals. I'm not a scientist, I'm not a, I'm not a doctor, but I do believe in the science and I do believe doctors, uh, uh, have a role and play in this. And, um, so Oswego, SUNY Oswego did test students on arrival. They only had a few. According to today's paper in the Post-Standard, they now have more infected students than any other campus in the SUNY system. So even that testing isn't a foolproof kind of approach. What is working, I'll leave it with this, what we do know, and, and the, the SUNY Oswego president had a very strongly worded message to those students, they're close to being having to shut down for 14 days. Because if you have 100 cases or a certain percentage in a 14, uh, daytime period, you have to close down and do online only for 14 days. And they're very close to having that. Um, we may be too, I don't know, but that's not the point. The point is, what the, what that president said, and I know our president, Bitterbaum, has said, and this is what we know, we have to avoid large crowds. We have to practice social distancing and we have to wear the masks. And as much as that is annoying and we're sick of it, we haven't even had to do it for a year yet. I think we look back at other generations and what they've had to endure for four, five years. You think about, oh, the sacrifices and, uh, wars at various times in this history. So I guess, you know, the, the questions were good questions. I hope I've been able to answer that, um, to some extent in terms of, you know, what our college chose to do versus other colleges. And what we chose to do, what other colleges chose to do, has not necessarily resulted in fewer infected cases. Um, but if we wear the mask, we practice social distancing, we avoid large crowds, everybody has to do that. everybody has to do that, we can get those numbers back down again. So you made a very good point there about not painting a one group with a broad brush. That's right on point. And well, let's just, let's just stick to what we know works. And those are the three things that are going to work. So thanks for giving me a few minutes there. I hope that I've been able to address some questions. If not, folks can feel free to call me. And that's, that's what I have. I was glad I had a chance to answer some very, I thought, some very good questions and I had some answers. So thank you.
Thank you for sharing, Bruce. Katie Solomon?
I have some concerns. Not to paint a group with a broad brush, but SUNY Courtland has 58 cases and the county has 63. Now, assuming the SUNY Courtland's 58 are included within the counties, that would mean that there are five within the county known positive cases currently and 58 at SUNY Courtland. And if they start doing their testing tomorrow, as they're scheduled to do, I would guess that they're going to come up with the rest of that 100 and they're going to be online for a couple of weeks. My concern is that the message that's coming from college administrators, although a good message and a strongly worded message, is being enacted on campus and not necessarily off campus. And I can tell you that my family likes to take late-night walks. When we walk around, particularly on Thursday, Friday, Saturday nights, we hear a lot of goings-on inside the houses now. And I'd not want the community to be turned into people who feel like they need to inform on each other. Because that's not the way we operate. So I would hope that the message gets particularly pointed for kids who live off-campus. And I'm concerned about how much cost the city would bear if we start testing neighborhoods and streets, looking for more specific COVID spikes. So if you want, we could talk about that another time, but I'm really concerned about how much that would cost the city.
Yeah, if, if we are going to increase testing, it will be a request to council. Where we're not just going to pull the trigger and spend money without bringing that to council. Bruce Adams and I have talked about it. I've talked about it with Nick Dolby in terms of piping in different sections of the city. I did think about bringing it to council and asked for this evening. I'm not comfortable that we're in a place where, okay, this, this is the plan that makes the most sense. It's possible that the first meeting in October, that might change. But kudos again to Bruce and his staff because this was something, you know, wastewater testing was like, well, what do we really get out of this? But now that we're seeing and the more that we talk about it, it's, okay, there's a potential value here. And it's definitely worth continuing the discussion. And part of my thought here is that, yes, testing would cost a little bit more, but the ability to do contact tracing and maybe offset reducing cases, it'd be better for the public health. It would be better in terms of the strain that could end up falling on the hospital or other infrastructure and better for all of our peace of minds, which in turn would be better economically. And I noticed I put the economics to the left there. We start with the health, we put the people first, and then these other questions. And I believe the governor, when he says, we don't have to choose between the economy and people. If we're doing this well, we can manage and we can structure. But in order for us to be economically sound, we have to be sound in terms of what we're doing with people. So if and when we have a stronger plan, then yeah, I'll bring that. And whatever we're costing, it would be essentially, we'll call it a cost avoidance or revenue loss avoidance, because as this continues, there's the peace of mind and then there's also the opportunity for us to be better as a community by spending a little bit of money. Bruce had his hand up?
Yeah, I just, Katie, you're actually spot on there, Katie. I agree that the students, obviously the students testing positive are a far greater number than the county as a whole. You're absolutely right about that. I don't want to downplay that. I wasn't trying to downplay that. I guess what I was really trying to emphasize is, the college had one approach and here we are. And some people said, well, why didn't they take a different approach? Well, other colleges did take a different approach and they're in the same spot. I think when you read it all over the country, this is happening, I mean, this is, you know, it's going to be up to the students to decide if they're going to do, take the precautions that we as, as a county have for taking. And if they are, then, then we have to stay in session. If they don't, then we'll be like others and be on 14-day online only and who knows what's going to happen. So yeah, you're right. I don't have an answer to that. You know, the colleges were never created to isolate people anyhow. The whole idea of a college is to bring people together and have collaborative thoughts and interactions. And so maybe we're asking the impossible of the typical 18- to 22-year-old college student. I don't, I don't know. But I was just trying to say that, and I'm not judging, and people can draw their own conclusions. We took, our college took one approach and here we are, other colleges took different approaches that some people said, why didn't we do that? It's one of the colleges did do that and they're in the same spot. So it's really down to student, you know, how they're going, if they're going to take their own precautions or not. So yeah, you're right. The students are a far numbers than the college, than the county as a whole. You're right about that.
And I like hearing the rationale for why SUNY did what they did because I was wondering that myself. So that's really helpful to hear. But I think we all know by now that what we need to do is keep our distance and keep masks on and wash our hands or use sanitizer all the time. And you're right again about the students. They're going to do what they're going to do. And I hope that the college keeps the pressure on them. I don't, you know, as a neighbor, we don't really know each other as neighbors. And I don't want to be that lady who's lurking, looking for trouble because that's gross. I just hope that they understand that we're doing what we can to keep them safe and they need to do what they can to keep ourselves safe, to keep us safe. And the rest of us should all understand that if, if they're not up to that task because of where they are developmentally, emotionally, then we just need to do it for ourselves and our families. Please, please do that, people, for yourselves and your families.
And like I said, I understand. Well, Jackie Chapman?
Right. I was just going to add that I've come to make the realization that it really isn't, you know, across the board, throughout the population. There really isn't a real understanding of the purpose of masks. My mask protects you. And your mask protects me. And that's something that people don't seem to internalize and, you know, see why it's so valuable. And I, so I just like to say, please think about that concept. That's, that's why I'm not wearing a mask really to protect me. I'm, you're wearing your mask and that protects me and my mask protects you.
Very good. And I think it's worth remembering, like I said, the first couple of weekends, it's been quiet and we are seeing a slight uptick in terms of activity. But I'd ask anybody to reflect years past what you've seen on weekends and what you're seeing, even during the weeks. And it's a tough adjustment and the majority of people throughout the community of all ages are making that adjustment and we need everybody to continue to.
And Mayor, when is your executive order? When, I can't remember the dates on that. When was that, the 25 people?
That was scheduled for tomorrow. Talked about potentially putting that forward for an extension. The governor's order limiting to 50 is, we think, enough moving forward.
Okay.
At the beginning of the meeting, asked for getting an agenda item. So agenda item number 16 just came forward late last week. This is burned apart and it is from Reverend Matthew Smith, based in Courtland. Not looking at raising any money. This would be September 26th, from noon to 1:00 in Courthouse Park. Description, event purpose is simply for people to come together to pray for the welfare of our community and we will encourage CDC guidelines, including wearing masks. There's no admission fee and there's no request for amplified sound or other. And Reverend Smith, I think, is fairly familiar with laws and ordinances. So I'll ask for a motion to consider. Phil Carpenter, second. Katie Solomon, discussion.
Are we going to have Mayor, somebody there to monitor the crowd situation?
We can, actually, I might be down there myself. When I said Reverend Smith is fairly familiar with laws and ordinances, I said that because he is in law enforcement as well.
Okay. I know who he is now. All right. Thank you for clarifying that.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, is there any further business to come before the council this evening?
Yeah, Brian, it's Ray.
Ray who?
Ray Parker, your city clerk.
I can't see your face.
And that is a gift for the rest of the city.
All right, Ray Parker.
At the beginning of the council meeting, you accepted the minutes as is. I just want to note that it's going to, you know, have the changes that Tom requested.
Very good. All right. Is there anything else to come before the council this evening? Hearing and seeing none, we can entertain a motion to adjourn. Kat McCarthy, John Bennett, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And aye, opposed? Ladies and gentlemen, we are adjourned. Thank you for your time this evening and in true New York Yankee fashion, I'll play out, if I can find it, a little Frank Sinatra.
And he ain't the plan, so I got to see you. Bye, folks. See you later.
Have a good night, everybody.